Okay. Global Partners is up next. I'll be recusing myself. I'm sure Valen will be taking over.
Before Rob starts, good evening and welcome everyone. My name is Kim Keel. I am the local representative for Global LP. I live in Flaudrich. I've been a resident for 28 years. And I'm very happy to introduce All Town Fresh to this evening. We have been, we're a third generation family run business. We have served the Livingston community since 1990 as a convenience store gas station. Let me introduce Rob.
Great, thank you Ken.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Rob Osterhout with Bowler Engineering. We've been in front of the planning board on several occasions now to present the plans for this project. Starting back in December with a very conceptual site plan and then progressing through more detailed plans. It's been a couple of months now since we've been at the planning board. And the reason for that little hiatus is that at the previous planning board meeting that we did attend, there was a lot of public feedback, a lot of planning board feedback, a lot of feedback from the town's planning board's consultant engineer. So in order to address all of that feedback, it took us quite a while to perform additional studies, to accumulate additional data, run soils investigations on the site. So we've done a lot of additional work to address comments that the public in the process has presented to us. So with that, we submitted a wealth of information, a very large packet to the town to support the application and to provide the additional information that was requested of us. That information is summarized within the cover letter that we submitted, and I'll just run through that to help clarify the items that we did submit. So from a plan perspective, we revised our site plan set, which consists of 20 sheets of plans. Everything from a site plan through grading and utilities, soil erosion sediment control, lighting, landscaping, construction details, truck turning movements. So a very detailed set of plans. We submitted a copy of the Boundary and Topo survey that was prepared for the project site. We submitted highway work permit plans that were prepared by our traffic consultant. And those are related to the DOT permits that are required for the project. We also submitted, as I mentioned, lighting plans by a lighting consultant. We submitted building elevations and signage details. We submitted a storm water pollution prevention plan in accordance with New York State DEC requirements. We also submitted some correspondence from New York State DOT, or DEC. An engineer's report, a traffic study completed by our traffic consultant, wetlands assessment report, and a threatened endangered species report. And in addition to that, we also submitted the full environmental assessment form that the board had requested from the applicant. So a lot of information was prepared and submitted. The plans are substantially the same from a layout perspective. I'll walk through the site plan and just to orient everybody, I've got an aerial exhibit here. You know, we're on the north side of the intersection of Route 9 and 9H. If there's anybody here that is not familiar with the project already, what we're proposing to do as part of this project is Global Partners owns the existing Extramar facility in Diner located on the opposite side of the intersection. Global Partners is proposing to build a brand new facility on the north side of the intersection. That new facility would replace the Extramar in its current location. So that building would be vacated, a new premise would be built with new fueling positions with both gasoline and diesel fueling, much like is on the site today. So from an aerial perspective, I've got a plan here that shows the existing conditions. From a site plan perspective, we've got an updated site plan. I'll turn this a little bit here. Hopefully everybody can see. This plan remains substantially the same as it was in the previous submission. One of the changes that we made in response to New York State DOT comments was we had a full access drive right here. We've now changed that to a right in, right out driveway in an effort to address some of the DOT comments that we received. Related to New York State DOT and the traffic side of this project, I mentioned the traffic report that we submitted. The traffic findings came back, very positive results. All levels of service will be maintained at a level of service B or better. Levels of service from a traffic perspective are rated from A to F, with A being the best, F being the worst. We're at a level of service B and with this proposed project, when we compare it to a no build scenario, there's a very, very minor change in the traffic. And it's a, under a second difference in delay as a result of this project. Some of you may be asking why? It's only that minimal amount, but really if you think about it, we're taking the existing gas station, convenience store, and relocating that to the other side of the road. So all of that traffic that's on the road, it's being moved from one side to the other. We're not creating a lot of traffic for this use. From a, so from a layout perspective, things have stayed pretty much the same as they were previously. We've tweaked the plans to address comments that we received. A lot of those from a technical perspective were from the town's consultant engineer from Crawford. So we've addressed those and submitted a response to comments with those revised plans. We provided the truck turning plans that were asked of us, and that hopefully helps to clarify a lot of those issues. As far as some of the other items that we submitted, the full environmental assessment form was a big request of the board, not a big request for us to achieve because we've provided a lot of information to support that anyway. So we, we hope that that's helpful and useful information for the board as you continue your review of the project. The wetlands report that was submitted by Ecological Solutions documents that there's no wetlands on this project site. There are wetlands nearby across the street and further to the north, but there are no wetlands that are on this project site. This project site is, I should have mentioned just at the beginning here, we're a little over three acres on this project site. And it incorporates a couple of parcels. So we've got a merger of a couple of parcels and a lot line adjustment on the third parcel, which brings our project limits to this point here and then down to the intersection. We also had our ecological consultant review the site for threatened endangered species. That report was included in the submission and the only potential habitat in the area here was the bald eagle. Then the ecological consultant coordinated with New York State DEC in that regard, found that there's potential habitat on the opposite side of Bell's Pond, quite a bit of distance away from the site. And that report's included to help document and clarify that there are no impacts from the project to that habitat or to anything on our project site. Since we've started this process, we got some feedback early on relative to the layout of the site. And what I wanted to do is just kind of go back to some of the early stages here because I think there's some misconceptions out in the public about what this project is. So this project is intended to be a neighborhood market with gasoline service. There will be food and beverage served within the facility. It's a new concept in the industry. All Town Fresh, as the name implies, offers a lot of fresh foods. There will be food made at your order. So you can go in, you can order everything from quinoa balls to rice balls and freshly made salads. There's a variety of food offerings. If you want to get a bag of Doritos and a Coke, you can do that too. But this is new in the industry, having a lot of fresh options that are quick and convenient at the same time. So there will be a variety of offerings here and a lot of opportunities. You know, you can get something on the run that you can't get in most markets today. So this is unique. It's a novel idea, and I think it's going to be an industry changer, to be honest with you. That's my personal opinion. One of the things we heard when we first came in to present this concept was that with the existing site, with the existing Extramar and Diner site, and I've observed this myself, and I'm sure many of you have, dump trucks, larger trucks will park on the side of the road and then occupy or take up space alongside the road, run across the road, go in, get a bite to eat, go to the bathroom, get, you know, something to take on the road, whatever. So we heard early on that that's a concern, that's a safety concern, having trucks parked along the highway and having pedestrians run across the road. So we were asked to modify our site plan to include some truck parking. So we've done that, that's incorporated into the plan. And, you know, those trucks could be anything from pickup trucks with utility trailers, landscape trailers, things like that, through dump trucks or through larger trucks. But we've got room on this site to accommodate those vehicles. You know, we've got our passenger car fueling area out front, and then we've got diesel fueling off the backside here. Diesel fueling is intended for not only those trucks, whether it's the pickup trucks with the utility trailers, or RVs, or dump trucks, or larger trucks. What we're intending to do is have the truck circulation in a counterclockwise fashion through the site. So this is one-way circulation for the trucks. They can enter the site here, circulate through the fueling position, they can park along here or here if they'd like, and then they can exit the site here, or they can circulate back through and exit the site over here. This driveway that I mentioned, that's right in, right out, is limited to passenger vehicles. So it's signed accordingly, so that trucks will not be using that egress drive. That's a recent change that we made as well. So with that, we've, we've submitted a ton of information. I hope it's been helpful for the board to, you know, run through that information, to digest it. The misconception that I noted here that was, I think, floating out there is that this is a truck stop. So along the lines of the truck parking and the truck fueling that I just mentioned, I just want to clarify that this is not a truck stop. This is merely a neighborhood market with gasoline service, with fuel service, both gasoline and diesel. We've added some truck parking to the site plan or the planning board's request to address a safety concern, but there will not be any overnight parking of trucks here. Idling will be limited in accordance with state law. This is not intended to be a truck stop. Personally, I worked on the Loves Travel Center project in Canaan, New York, and that is a travel center. That is intended for trucks, a large number of trucks. This is nowhere near the scale of a travel center or a truck stop. So hopefully that clarifies that misconception that may be floating out there. Let's see. From a storm water perspective, I did want to touch on that because we've, we've got a very positive impact on the community here with this proposed project. When you look at the existing Extramar site, it's an older site. It's been around for a long time. There are no storm water controls that are in accordance with current practices. So from a storm water perspective, building a brand new site allows us the opportunity to provide storm water enhancements and treatment practices that are not found on the existing site. We are proposing to provide a very detailed and redundant treatment training for storm water purposes, and that's in accordance with New York State DEC requirements. So all of the runoff from our site here is going to run towards, we've got a storm water treatment train towards the back of the site. That includes settling tanks, it includes hydrodynamic separators, pre-treatment practices, and then a larger storm water basin here in the middle of the site. With the site being relatively green today, and by that what I mean is that there's no buildings, no large amounts of impervious area on the site today. There are some concrete pads and old pavement areas, gravel areas, things like that. But with the site being relatively green in its current condition, the flow of storm water off of that site today is relatively small. When you add pavement areas, when you add buildings and impervious areas, that usually increases your storm water runoff. Makes sense, right? Everybody realizes that, you know, your driveways, your houses, whatever. So what we have to do to meet New York State DEC requirements from a storm water perspective is we are not allowed to release any more storm water runoff from the site than what leaves the site in its current state today. So because it's a relatively green site today, the amount of storm water that is released from the site is very low. And that's the threshold that we have to meet. We have to keep it at those low volumes and those low release rates. So in our storm water management plan and our SWIP that we submitted, it's documented that we have reduced the runoff rates to the discharge point located on the north end of the site by anywhere from 50 to 65 percent. I think about 49 to 65 percent. And, and that's dependent, the reason why there's a range there is because we evaluate different storms. We evaluate, you know, everything from a one-year storm up to a 100-year storm, again in accordance with New York State DEC requirements. So we're reducing those, those low levels even more than what they are today. So from a storm water perspective, we're meeting the DEC requirements, and I think we're exceeding those in some regards as well. So that's a very positive thing for the community here. Just from a use perspective, the existing Extramar, like I said, is an older station. The tanks are older, they're 30-plus years old. With this new project, we'll also be including built new tanks. The standards have changed significantly over 30 years. We're required to put in double wall tanks. There's monitoring requirements that are enforced. They're monitored all the time. There's, in the double wall tanks, there's what's called interstitial, interstitial monitoring. So if there's ever a leak from the primary tank into that interstitial space, alarms go off, the applicant's monitoring service is alerted, and something can be done while that leak would be contained within a secondary of the outer tank. There's a lot of measures that are in place that were not in place 30-plus years ago. So from an environmental perspective, a new project really affords the community some insurance that may not be in place with older tanks. So that's a huge benefit as part of this project. Now, somebody might be saying, okay, well, if the Extramar site is vacated and you're going to move to the site across the street, what if somebody else goes in the Extramar site? Now we have two gas stations here. So Global Partners owns the Extramar site. When they move their facility to this brand-new facility, that property will be marketed. And before it's marketed, the tanks, the dispensers, the canopies, the fuel, fueling infrastructure will be removed and taken out of the site. So the tanks will be taken out. If there's any cleanup that's required, that will be done in accordance with DEC requirements. That site will be cleaned up from a fueling perspective. And in addition to that, not only will those items be removed, but Global Partners will be putting a deed restriction on that parcel so that no other fueling operation can be put into place in that facility. So really, you know, like I said, we're taking the older facility, upgrading it, putting it on a brand-new site across the street. The convenience factor is still there for all the patrons that might use that site today. We're literally across the street, but there's a lot of upgrades and a lot of improvements that are really going to help the community. We know there's been a lot of feedback, a lot of concern and comments. As I mentioned, there's some misconceptions out there, I think. But hopefully, this presentation, along with the information that we've submitted to the planning board, and, which is all available for public review, has helped to clarify some of these items and address a lot of the concerns. Let me just look at my list, make sure I hit everything. You know, one thing I didn't touch on, but I think is, you know, implied and very obvious is that this is going to provide additional tax revenue for the town, for the county, additional jobs in the community as well with the expansion of the store. We did receive feedback from New York State DOT, from the fire department, from the town's consultant team, from the planning board, from the public. And we want to thank everybody for that. That's what this process is about. The planning board process is an open process. It's meant to include the public. So all of that feedback gets incorporated into the review of the project, and it requires us to address those concerns. We've addressed a lot of information, supplied a lot of additional information. So we're glad to be here tonight. We're glad to be presenting this information. And at this point, I'll turn it over to the board in case you have any further questions that we can work through. Thank you.
Does the public have any questions?
Yes.
Name and...
Ann McPherson. And my question to you is, I'm concerned about the economic feasibility of your restaurant. Hudson is five miles away, is loaded with restaurants. Your current facility is empty half the time. They do a good breakfast job. They don't do a great job during the day. And this new natural quinoa concept, I think, is one that might not float. You know, I know you're thinking about all the people on the weekends and the people going to the Berkshires, but I'm very concerned, in your market study, did you account for all the restaurants in Hudson? The failed restaurant down Route 23, which is now a school, which offered natural foods? That's one question. Number two question, what effect, what kind of lighting are you going to use? And if it's sodium lighting, what effect will that have on the bald eagles?
So I'm a civil engineer with Bowler Engineering, so I don't get into the market studies, but I'll, I'll throw in a little bit here and defer to Global for their feedback as well. You know, keep in mind that we're not offering just newer, healthier food options. We have a variety of offerings at the facility. This facility has indoor seating and outdoor seating, so it has like a restaurant component. There will be freshly made foods available, but it's not a restaurant per se. It's very similar to the existing facility. It's a convenience retail market. So, you know, people that are fueling can get something to go on the run while they're, you know, on the road. So the offerings will be varied, like I said. You know, I can defer to Global if there's any other feedback that you have to weigh in.
Actually, I'll jump in on that too. I mean, we, obviously, we're going to start with what we presented tonight, but the market's going to change, so the menu will change based on the demand. We are going to have healthy alternatives, but we're also going to have a breakfast sandwich. We're going to have, you know, coffee. So again, we hope to draw from the Hudson market. The Hudson market is, has got some fabulous restaurants, and we hope to draw from that.
And then I can answer the, the next part of that question was about the lighting. We will have LED lighting on the site. Everything is downlit lighting, so that everything is focused, you know, downward towards the site and not, you know, up in the air where there's going to be a large, you know, amount of light pollution up into the sky, that type of thing. So everything will be LED, energy efficient. Again, we're, we're doing something that's a little bit different in the industry. Not only the food choices, we're raising the bar for these types of facilities, that's for sure.
Is this facility big enough to have showers in it?
There will be no showers in this facility.
Want to show your name and your last name?
L U B A R T.
My name is Melanie Nelson. To the board, when zoning was approved and the master plan was made for Livingston about 30 years ago, a complete study was done of all the soil, all around different places. And they were maps telling what kind of soil was in each place. And the zoning was made, as far as I understand, based on what was good for the soil in the master plan. This is a commercial corner. It would be natural for all corners to be commercial, but the board, in its wisdom, chose not to approve a gas station on this corner. Now, they're asking for a variance. I understand they have, they have their own commercial reason. Do I have this wrong?
There are no variance.
But this is commercial, but it is not listed as suitable for a gas station. Am I right? They're asking for a variance to get a gas station.
Special use permit, Melanie.
Special use permit?
Yeah.
All right. The original plan and the master plan was not to have a gas station, I understand. That's my first point. My second point is, the mobile station that exists right now is the most expensive gas around. Go a couple more miles and you save 20 to 30 cents to go into Hudson. Anybody who has any local knowledge will pass them right up. Now, after you spend the extra money building this whole new project, you can't be lowering your prices, the gas might be even higher. This is another challenge to success of the project. Those are two of the things on my mind.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interject here just for a second. This is not a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if you have any comments to make, we've had three public hearings, if I, if I can, if I count so far. This is not a public hearing. The public hearing was closed last month.
No, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
This is, this is a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing. My understanding is the public hearing was closed and the minutes reflected the public hearing was closed.
It was continued.
Sir, this is not a public hearing. If you have comments for the board, you can provide comments. As a courtesy, and I think we're going to have a relatively low number of questions we're going to take, if you have questions for the applicant, this is your opportunity. We're not going to be here till 11 o'clock tonight. We're going to have a few questions because this isn't a public hearing. We will have another public hearing at an appropriate time in the future.
After it's been approved.
Ted, I just have to address that because...
Not after it's been approved. That's not the way we do things.
I went to the tape before coming over here because it was a question about this. The exact language at the end, as he got near the end, said, I'm going to take one more. Mr. Finger spoke. He said, I'm going to close the public hearing and it will reopen at the May meeting, May 1st. That is the literal words. I have it, we could take it on the tape. That is exactly what was said. So if it is closed, I would like clarification on how and when it was closed, but that is the literal word.
If the board wants to, if the board wants to have a continual public hearing tonight, you can do that. If you want to close the public hearing, you can close it right now. That's up to the board, if we need clarification. I wasn't here, I read the minutes, and the minutes say that the public hearing was closed. So we'll let the board, we'll let...
It was publicly closed.
I hear, I hear what you're saying. I'll leave you, I'll have to leave that up to the board.
Mr. Mark?
Public hearing and then they could ask questions.
It wasn't closed. We...
That's right.
No, it was closed. I understood the public hearing was closed, it could, it would be, discussion would be continued.
Yes.
Tonight.
And if I may add in here, you know, my understanding was that the public hearing was going to be closed. We were not at the meeting, as I said, we were pulling up additional information together.
It's supposed to be closed.
So we did not attend, but the intent, as Mr. Hillshire mentioned, is to have another public hearing, and we will be providing notice about another public hearing. And one of the things that might be appropriate at this point is to consider whether or not we want to schedule that public hearing for the June planning board meeting. And if so, you know, we would be, we would be back in June, we would send out the notices in the meantime. But, you know, that, that's an option for planning board consideration.
Well, the public hearing will be closed, but we will take questions.
You have to have a vote. You've got to have a vote. If you're going to close the public hearing right now, we, you would have a... If you're going to close the public hearing right now, we, you would have a vote. The board has to vote.
Can the public make comment before the vote is closed?
You're going to continually ask for questions.
Again, that's up to you, but I, but we want to have some order here tonight. It was my impression that the intent was not to have a public hearing tonight. We would, as a courtesy, we would have questions of the applicant. We've had three months of speeches, we'll, there'll be opportunity for more speeches in the future. I don't think the board is ready for more speeches tonight. If you are, you let me know.
These aren't speeches, they're concerns.
Speeches? Public comment?
You're very patronizing.
Yes, you are.
Shame on you.
Make a motion.
We're going to continue questions.
Before there's a vote, Mr. Chairman, there is going to be another public hearing, right? So, is it something, if you're going to close it tonight, that we can at least schedule the June meeting for the next public hearing? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, if I can interject, I don't think, I don't think we're at the position where we're going to have another public hearing. I think that there are going to be comments, our engineer, I'm going to have some comments. I haven't reviewed the applicant's submissions thoroughly. I know the engineer is actively reviewing the applicant's submissions. I think we have some questions about hydrology that we're going to need answered. We have some questions about what's going to happen at the other site, so we need more information. So, I respectfully, I would suggest to the planning board that we let Michelle finish what she has to do, and I think there's going to be some good questions that we're going to have to give back to the applicant, and the applicant's going to have to give us more information. We've already identified information that we feel that we need that we don't have, and based on that, I think it's too early to schedule another public hearing.
Can I, can I just?
Queen of order?
Make a comment?
Yeah. I have a question.
I'm concerned about this. I'm not completely familiar with your regulations here. I'm familiar with regulations in other towns. In many towns, once you close a public hearing on an application, the board has to take action on it within a specified period. In some cases, it's 45 days; in some cases, it's 60 days. If this public hearing has been closed officially, first of all, you can't just then reopen it, public comment is over, and that doesn't make a lot of sense. If new information is going to be coming in, new material is going to be presented, that, you have to give the public a comment, an opportunity to comment on that new information. That's the way it's usually done. I'm concerned about just the process here, which is that you're locking yourselves into a situation where you have to take action on this application, and this is out of fairness to the applicant. Once you close an application, you're locking yourself into a situation where, I don't know what the regs say, but 30 days from now or 60 days from now, you have to take action on this. And you don't want to, you don't want to cloud the procedure here. You don't want to, you know, you don't want to hold yourselves open to somebody saying, "Look, you violated your own procedure here." That's, that's, that's the comment that I want to make in just, in terms of how this goes forward. So, it seems to me, if you want, if you want to re, if you want to adjourn the public hearing and then reopen it at a specific date, that makes perfect sense to me. But the idea of treating it as a closed matter, you're locking yourself into having to make a decision in X period of time, and I could get the regulations and look at what that is. 45 days? Okay.
We, just as a response to that, if there is, if there is information that's lacking, we would take that into consideration when we make our deliberations. So, it is, it is, it's beneficial to the applicant to have additional time to provide information that the planning board is looking for, rather than acting where an, where the, there's information that's missing, and then the, then the application is going to suffer from the fact that there's missing application. So, respectfully, I don't, I don't agree, I don't agree with the, with the concerns of the gentleman here. I think that we need to, we need to go forward. My recommendation is that as a courtesy, you, you know, there's some public, the public has some questions, and then we would, that would be the end of what we're going to, the business that we would conduct tonight, and then there would be correspondence between the town and the applicant, and the applicant would presumably give, provide more information. I don't want to be, I don't want to have 15 people asking me, you know, "What about this? What about that?" That's, I don't want to be in that position, and we shouldn't be in that position, we shouldn't be in that position here. There's no, this isn't a forum for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could kind of piggyback that, you know, if there is a timeline associated with the closing of a public hearing, the applicant has agreed to waive that condition for this application tonight. So, if you wanted to close that public hearing and reconvene with another public hearing another time, the applicant is waiving that timeline associated with closing this public hearing.
If I could just add, I think that's great, but that still doesn't give the public an opportunity to comment about new information, which was, in some cases, presented, submitted to the board just two weeks ago. For example, the first elevations and floor plan of this restaurant that I've seen came in in the middle of this month, right? I have some comments about that, but if the public hearing isn't open, I can't make those comments, right?
So, sir, if I...
You know what I'm saying?
Can I interject?
Yeah.
There will be an opportunity for that, is what, you know, there will be a public hearing for you to be able to comment on those things. That's what, you know, is being discussed right now. There will be another public hearing.
Then let's at least procedurally put this on the basis that you're adjourning the public hearing until it will be, because as I say, if you close it, you're, you're in danger of violating your own procedures. That's all I'm saying. And I don't know that, I don't, it's wonderful that you say you'd like to waive it, but I'm not sure that the law would allow you to waive it.
It absolutely does.
Hi. Rob Knatchey, attorney for Global. You can waive the requirement, and we're coming here affirmatively stating, if there is a requirement, which I agree with Ted, that I'm not sure there's a requirement when the public hearing's closed. He's telling us the application isn't deemed complete yet, we're still working on that. We're affirmatively stating, and it's a bunch of semantics what we're going through right now, is whether we're closing it or adjuring it, there will be another public hearing. It's not fair to the public to ask them to have a public hearing tonight. You haven't had time to review it, review the information. Come back. There will be another public hearing. We're not asking you to close this at the next meeting. Come here and say, "If you don't approve this, we're suing you." That's not what Global's about. We want to work with you, we want to give you an opportunity to respond. So, it's all a matter of semantics.
It's common, and we've gone through in the last five, six, seven years, we have Hannaford, we have Hudson Valley Creamery. It is absolutely common, if there is some complicated application, that the applicant waives the time period, the public hearing, you know, the requirement that there's action after, after...
And to add to that, is, you know, if you continue to have the continuation of a public hearing, you, all the public came last meeting because the public hearing was adjourned. You didn't know when the meeting was going to be again. This really is to the benefit of the public, that there will be a public hearing. Ted's saying it won't be in June. We wanted it in June, he said he's not ready in June.
I haven't heard the board or the lawyers say there's going to be a public hearing. You're the only one saying that. They're saying it's closed, he's saying, the lawyer's saying it's closed and will take written comment.
No, he actually said he wasn't ready to schedule that public hearing.
Well, he didn't say there would be a public hearing either.
There will be. I did say that, and there will be a public hearing.
Can you vote on that and give a date?
I guess it's a board decision.
We don't want to have a date yet, we want to have information.
We don't have information.
But can you vote that there will definitely be another public hearing?
We're required to have another public hearing.
Yes, in the back. Name, please. Stand up, so we can hear you.
My name is Dr. Jeff Monkesch, and I live in Clark.
Can you speak up?
My question is, when you're submitting data to the town board and to the DEC, did you discuss and/or submit data on 2.5 micron particulate matter, both what is currently in the area and what is going to happen when and if this thing is built? And this is something I have not heard you mention at all, neither at this meeting or any of the other meetings. You are aware, and if you're not aware, you should be aware, that one of the major concerns in the United States, if not the world, is 2.5 micron particulate matter, which comes from the spewing of diesel fuel, diesel and car, and a number of other means of transmission of this material, which causes a dramatic increase in heart attacks, strokes, chronic lung disease, and exacerbations, as well as deaths. This has been reported right here in the Harvard Health Letter. There are many, many articles about the subject over the last 20 or 30 years. So, my question to you is, did you address these issues in your comments? And is there a mechanism by which the DEC requires monitoring of what is currently around and what is going to happen when and if this facility is built with respect to 2.5 micron particulates and ozone layers? I think that is crucial for the health of the people who live here, and I'm wondering whether or not you address that.
I believe what you're saying is, did we address, we're complying with the regulations with DEC. Our tank system will be state-of-the-art, it will include all the monitoring parameters. Are we going to be monitoring a specific, what you said is a contaminant? Yes and no. Yes, we are. We are going to monitor and make sure that there are no leaks at the station.
Will the DEC require that facilities such as this...
Oh, you're talking about exhaust?
Exhaust, yeah, exhaust, air pollution.
Well, yes, I know, that's, I'm just the lawyer here, providing information that there's going to be, you know, no idling, but I, that's all.
This facility will be permitted and operated in accordance with New York State DEC regulations. Those regulations...
What does that mean? Do you know the numbers? Do you have the numbers?
Those regulations would dictate what this facility can or cannot do, and this facility will be operated in accordance with that.
Your question? Susan's question. Susan Wile, has any consideration been given to hookups for electric vehicles?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. And I did not mention that, but that was one of the items that we added to the site plans with this last submission. We have four electric charging station spots within the site. Good question, thank you.
Here.
Catherine Tyler, just had two questions. Have you, I think I might have missed it earlier, but did you file the long form to the DEC? Okay, okay. And the other is...
Wait, well, to clarify that, you just said to the DEC. It's a New York State DEC form, and we file it with the town.
I see, okay.
Yep.
And the other thing is, when, when and where we could have access to what they're providing the board to see the plans and to, is there a link or something or a packet?
Yeah, we, we have electronic, electronically, the applicant has provided a submission. I think probably, I hate to have Tammy be responsible for this, but I think if it's not, how easy, how easy is it to find your link? Your, the link to your submission?
We don't necessarily have a link that we could share for the public to view this information. It's been submitted electronically and in hard copy to the town, so it is on file. Anybody can stop into town offices to view that information. Whether or not it's available, you know, in an electronic form through the town, I don't know the answer to that.
Or by the town clerk, I'd say, "Yes, we have it here. People want to come during normal business hours, they're welcome to look at it."
If, rather than have everybody call up Tammy, is there a way, is it easy enough for them to, is there some other way that, other than going through the town clerk, is there some other way that they can contact your electronic submission?
Dropbox.
We have a website for it to this project or anything like that, so nothing comes to mind.
Tammy, what would be your suggestion? If I'm a member of the public and I want to get it electronically without giving you all kinds of extra work?
I can probably forward their email directly to people. That's probably the easiest, no?
I think you're going to probably have an issue with that, just because of the file size. We've submitted so much information, there's a very, you know, large files associated with that. Is it possible to put it up on the town website?
I think we have a solution.
Pam Klein, Livingston Concerned Citizens has the information posted up on our website.
She wants to email it to you?
I have it.
We have it.
Oh, cool.
Thank you.
Yes, Scott Hughes. I just want to thank you guys for coming tonight, answering all these people's questions. I'm kind of putting you through the wringer, so to speak. You guys have been pretty forthcoming with any answers that they're looking for so far. And I can almost guarantee that all the naysayers will be at that facility at some point in time.
Let's be forward.
Any other questions?
Dave Gordon, I'm representing Livingston Concerned Citizens. I have a couple of questions on the stormwater. First, the existing site, nothing is going to change with respect to that drainage and wherever it's going, right? There's no treatment in it?
For the existing extra mark site?
Yeah.
Right now, that site operates as it is. There's no stormwater controls that are current with today's standards. Once that site is vacated, if somebody else wanted to go into that facility, they would be subject to site plan review with the planning board, and they would have to go through any upgrades that would be needed at that time.
Runoff now kind of runs off wherever it goes, and that's not going to change physically, right? You're still going to have impervious surfaces. The runoff is going to be basically the same as in a paved surface that's not controlled, correct?
Not necessarily, because you're going to remove the tanks, so there could be, you could put pervious surface there, you could even gravel there.
Let's, let's see, are the plans to replace the impervious surfaces with a more pervious surface?
At this time, we know that we're going to remove the tanks, the dispensers, the canopy, and then what happens on that site in the future will be dictated by whoever is going to buy that. It will be restored, we're not going to leave a big hole in the ground. You know, the hole will be backfilled once the tanks are removed, it'll be brought up to grade and stabilized, and then that site will be marketed, and then whoever's going to go into that site in the future would have to come into the planning board, much like we're doing here in this process.
Well, I'm interested in the detail of what we're discussing now in terms of the existing site, but also I want to clarify your comment on the, on the new facility. You mentioned that there's going to be, you used certain numbers with respect to reduction, I think it was 49 to, was it 75 percent reduction?
65 percent.
Is that reduction over or from the existing condition, or is that reduction from DEC requirements?
That reduction is in the existing conditions on this site, on the new site.
So, you're going to actually reduce the runoff rate on the new site?
That's right. That's all documented in our stormwater report. That's been filed with the town, and will be available on the, on the website.
Is there similar, is there similar reduction in terms of the pollutant loading numbers?
So, we, we have a, a series of stormwater practices with the proposed project that will handle all of the requirements that we have from DEC's perspective, and that does include pollutants.
So, pollutant loading will meet DEC requirements?
I can't sit here and tell you that the pollutant load is going to be reduced by those same percentages, because existing conditions are much different than the proposed conditions, but all of our stormwater practices are in accordance with DEC requirements and are meeting those requirements.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
How will, how long will you be under construction? How is that going to affect traffic flow if you're approved? Are there going to be road closures?
Okay, about a five-month construction period.
And will there be road closures on 23 or 9H?
No, as part of the submission that we made to the town, we've submitted works on traffic control plans. There will be a shoulder closure, but no lane closures are anticipated.
Becky Schroeder-Harkel Road, on the water treatment, is there an amount of rain, knowing that, you know, we've had the hurricanes and stuff in the past and large amounts of inches of rain and stuff? How likely is it that your treatment system can get overwhelmed and just spew untreated water into the swamp that runs to the north of the facility?
So, we designed the facility for a 100-year storm, and that's, again, a New York State DEC requirement, so we've got capacity for that. We have multiple treatment practices in place before the water even gets, the stormwater gets to our basins. So, all of those practices would be engaged... So all of those practices would be engaged. Once a larger storm event comes, we can handle up to the 100-year, probably a little bit more than that. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but a little bit more than a 100-year storm. We can't design right to the, you know, to that specific requirement, or we don't design to that specific requirement, I should say. We always have a little bit of conservatism in there.
So what is a 100-year storm? How many inches per hour for how long? I mean, what's?
It's a very technical thing, but a 100-year storm is a significant storm with the probability of that happening. It's a very infrequent storm.
But that with profit change, that's not true.
What we have to design for, there's a 90 percent rule, which is essentially like the first inch of rainfall. That's the more common storm. That's the everyday storm. So, you know, we handle that, you know, with absolutely no problem at all. Larger storms we design for as well.
You're very confident that it could handle the wastewater and that the contaminated water would be shooting into the swamp?
In accordance with DEC requirements, we have designed the system for a 100-year storm.
Mike Grisham. Are you saying that the treatment plant can handle, Mike Grisham? Greenport. Can you, are you saying that the treatment plant can handle a 100-year storm without overflow?
That's correct.
It'll continue dumping into the holes in the soil below the site?
Say that again, I didn't hear that.
The water will flow into the holes in the soil below the site and not runoff.
That's correct. We, our stormwater system is designed to accommodate a 100-year storm.
Robert, it's important to distinguish between, some are people are saying wastewater treatment plant and the difference between stormwater treatment and wastewater treatment.
Well, stormwater, that's what I meant, stormwater.
Yeah, and just want to make sure you're not mixing them.
So wastewater is different from stormwater.
Right, but in this, I was talking to stormwater.
You were talking stormwater. Yes, and so was I.
Okay, one more.
Could you just run through what's happening with the septic system and how that gets treated?
Yeah, absolutely.
What's your name, please?
Paul Rubin.
Paul Rubin.
So from a wastewater perspective, so that's the septic system. We've got a new septic system proposed, brand-new septic system proposed in the green space here on the south side of the project site. That site is being, or that system is being designed to handle the anticipated flows, the loading rates that are required by New York State DEC. Based on the public feedback that we had, we've increased the size of that wastewater system. We initially had that system designed to utilize some flow rates from another all-town-fresh market. Those flow rates turned out to be lower than the DEC loading rates if we applied the full use here, which is the convenience store and the restaurant uses. So the system has been designed, or redesigned, I should say, modified to accommodate those larger flows. Everything's being handled in this area. We're subject to permitting.
Direct interaction into the permissible substrate then?
Yeah, essentially, right? Jim, I mean, Jim Blissman with my office there? I mean, it would, obviously, it would go through a septic tank, there'd be a grease trap, and then it would be pumped, the effluent would be pumped to- To beds. An absorption, absorption bed, yep.
What's the rate, what's the rate of water you're going to estimate putting into that? How many gallons a day?
It's designed for 1,800, close to 1,800.
Around 1,800 gallons per day.
For the speedies permit then?
Yep. That's right. We would be subject to a New York State DEC speedies permit for the wastewater.
I have a question about the removal of the tanks.
I'm sorry?
I have a question about the removal of the old tanks.
Yes, sir.
I just want to be clarified. You can't just take them out of the ground without DEC being there to watch this.
Correct.
They're going to be there.
We have to do that.
There could be leaks there now. Probably is.
We have to secure permits from DEC to remove those tanks, and-
Is that been submitted? No, that's the stuff that we need to see. Here, that's what we need to see, these things.
So that is a process that we have to follow to pull those tanks. I don't know that, I don't, I've never had that request for us to submit, you know, tank pull permits.
Well, I know they got to be there, they're going to have.
You're absolutely correct. They have to be in place.
I would like to know when they're there.
That's what I'm asking. Yeah, they have to be in place.
I just want to see machines show up and, we've had that happen.
Believe me, Global's been in the business for a long time. They know the rules and the requirements in that regard, so, you know, they're not going to do something to jeopardize their reputation and, you know, and get fined from DEC and everything like that, so.
All right, just one more. Lady over here?
I just have a question.
Name, please.
Rose Caldwell. Has Global considered, or is it feasible, that rather than moving to another site, that you upgrade the current site? And is there adjacent property that you could expand to? I've seen other gas stations in the county who came in and took an old abandoned gas station and upgraded them with new state-of-the-art tanks. I'm concerned as a citizen that, so you build this new upgraded station, you say you're going to mitigate and take out the old tanks and then put this old location facility on the market, but who's to say that doesn't just sit there? And that's not helpful for any of us as homeowners to have something like that in our town. And so I wonder, is that something that's even been looked at?
Dean Ockert Town is from Global. We have looked at that, we do look at that in each instance, and in most cases, first of all, it's difficult to acquire enough property. This lot is significantly smaller than what we're moving to, to the three acres. In order to fit the facility on, we need a considerable amount of space behind us, and the fact that it's a point, you know, you can see all the green space that we have in the new plan, and the front of the point is really used up for green space. So it's generally not feasible to do that from a presentation standpoint, from a having the right size standpoint, and from a cost standpoint, unless it's a true rectangular kind of situation or square situation where we can immediately acquire all the property around us to expand the property. So in this particular instance, it probably wouldn't work.
Okay, comment period is over.
You're looking at me.
Well, no, I didn't know whether Michelle had any.
I have, I have something, but you want to go first?
Can I just, can we just get definitive clarification? Is this public hearing over?
Ask, ask the chairman.
Okay, that's-
It's been closed.
So this public hearing is closed?
Yes.
Are they going to do a vote on that?
I think they did.
We did a vote.
The public hearing is closed?
Yes. We just were open for comments.
For now, right.
So this is, comment was outside the public comment period?
This was, this was just a comment period after the, just so they could answer some questions.
Public hearing was closed. You did take that vote? I thought he says not to take that.
Yeah, they did.
He did, okay.
We made the motion and-
All right, so the public hearing is closed?
Yes.
Not adjourned closed?
No, it's adjourned.
Closed.
It's closed.
Wait, what did you vote on? Adjourned or closed? It's your first.
It's closed.
So there's no more public hearing?
Yes. He said there will be open a public hearing. Well, it's up to you just deciding.
We will have more, at least one more public hearing in the future.
We're asking for you to vote and say there will be a public hearing? That there will be another public hearing? Did you vote on that? No. All right, so we'll take a vote. Make a motion that we have an open public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Second. And we vote on it?
All right.
All in favor? Aye? Aye.
Can you say one?
When we get more information?
We get more information. We have, Michelle is a comment, and then I have something too. Go ahead.
Crawford and Associates provided an initial comment letter based on a preliminary review of what was submitted by Global and their engineer. I had a couple of questions for the board that hopefully we can clarify today. One of them being, and it has been brought up during the public comments that we're hearing tonight, is the demolition and restoration plan that's going to happen on the existing site. Currently, the applicant is providing a brief narrative of what's going to go on on the site in their responses, but what level of detail is the planning board willing to accept as far as plans? Are you looking for fine, detailed plans that show, as an example, landscaping? They talked about filling in the holes with potentially just gravel, maybe making it some green space. Are you looking for a fine, finer level of detail than what's actually explained in the brief paragraph that has been provided by the applicant? So today, we should kind of hash out what level of that detail you're looking for, so the applicant has some direction.
Do you have a suggestion? Michelle will make a suggestion. Go ahead.
Are you looking for plans, for them to provide plans of, are they, are they going to do soil testing out there as an example? Is that one of the requirements you're going to want to see? They talk about being in compliance with the DEC regulations, but what does that actually mean? Do you know what that means? Do you want to see that written out in the paragraph, in the detailed instructions of what they're actually going to do?
Those are her recommendations.
Those are my recommendations, I'm asking.
She's asking in the form of a question, but those are her recommendations.
I wouldn't want to see DEC make a statement.
We have to decide how far to take it, don't we?
Yes.
Because I don't hear anybody talking about the building yet.
A lot of these answers are going to be from DEC.
Yes. And it all depends on DEC, I would think.
So you're, you're indicating that you potentially, or you're recommending that the applicant would have to submit to the DEC and have some form of correspondence accepting the plans that they're proposing for the facility?
Right, yes.
That's what you're recommending?
We don't want to junkyard. That's going to be very difficult for the applicant to address as part of a site plan review. That is something that would come, the applicant's not going to go through that effort until they have an approval in place and until they can get going on the new facility. So, you know, we're trying to keep one facility in operation while the new one's being constructed, and then the old one, once the new one's open, the old one will be vacated and the fuel infrastructure would be removed. So, you know, we need to keep that in mind here.
All we're trying to say is that we want that plan in place.
Yes.
You can continue what you're doing, but we want the plan-
It's one thing to have a plan, but the conversation was going towards having something submitted to DEC and information back from DEC.
As soon as you start digging, DEC is going to be there.
Tom Daniel of Global Partners, Senior Project Manager of building the site. Typical process for tank removal is we have to notify DEC of a removal in a certain timeframe. There is no real communication back, so that we have to give them a criteria of, we have an environmental and cell phone on site, they have to file a closure report saying the soil is clean or is contaminated, we're going to take out X of our material.
Your person?
And that, that all goes back to DEC. DEC not, doesn't necessarily come on the site.
No, I know.
So, just wanted to be clear. They never show up.
Would it be something would be, and if the board, you know, could weigh in on this, that the applicant would make the recommendations of the process at which you would go through? You said you would have the certain notice to the DEC within a certain timeframe, maybe bulleting that out so that there's a better understanding? Because we keep hearing the same thing over and over, it's going to be in accordance with the regs, but maybe bullying, your process out that you're going to take would be more helpful if?
Just said that it would be one of his people doing it. I would rather see our people.
I mean, it could be one being that we have somebody from the town out there to witness it if the board would.
It's something that, that, you know, we could-
Why don't you show up?
Or get the soil tests.
As a way to move this forward, let's have Michelle in her, because she's working on another piece of correspondence. Let's have her make her recommendations, her suggestions, and then Global, she'll make them in writing, and then Global will respond to that. That's a way to move forward. It's a benchmark, come from Michelle, right? Because we can trust her.
Another comment that we had in our letter was with regards to a hydrology report and the extent that the board was looking for hydrology. I had a conversation with Bowler Engineering after we reviewed through the letter. As a preliminary step, we had indicated that we wanted them to submit a summary to the DEC or approving agencies, DEC and Department of Health, much like they already did to the DEC regarding the stormwater treatment terrain, in which they received a response back from DEC indicating that it was in accordance with their regulations. So something similar to that, a correspondence that would review their concept design. We're not asking for them to get a permit at this point, just review their concept design that they have provided for us with regards to the proposed storage tanks, the water system, the wastewater treatment system, and the stormwater, indicating something along the lines that the concept design is in accordance with their regs and that it meets the water quality standards with regards to your principal aquifer. Is that, or is the board looking for a more formal report with regards to a hydrologist, an independent hydrologist coming in and making a review of the project, much like the DOT traffic study where they had an independent company do a traffic study on the site?
I may chime in before you respond. In order for an applicant, whether it's Global Partners or any other applicant, it could be as simple as, you know, somebody putting up a small farm sand operation, to go to New York State DEC and other permitting agencies and request that they review a project and provide you with correspondence is very difficult. Oftentimes, those agencies are overtaxed, they have a lot of workload, and to get a response on a formal permit application takes a long time, let alone to ask them to review and comment on a project without a permit application in hand. This is kind of what happened to us with DOT. We had submitted to New York State DOT in the beginning of December, and one of the reasons why we weren't back before this board until this evening is that it took us months and months to get a response from New York State DOT on a concept submission. So if you were to say that you're going to require the applicant to go to DEC and these other agencies to get this correspondence, this could take months and months, and we may never, ever get the response, because they don't have to respond. They have a lot of other things going on. We know that we're subject to a New York State DOT highway work permit. We know that we're subject to a New York State DEC speedies permit for the stormwater. We know that we're subject to a New York State DEC speedies permit for the wastewater system. So that's two permits with DEC. We know we're subject to reviews and approvals and permits through the Health Department, and we have to do those. We can't construct this facility without those permits, so that correspondence and those approvals will come with time, but to require the applicant to do that before an approval is in place is very, very difficult. And like I said, it's not just this project, it's any project. It's very difficult to get that type of feedback from these agencies, you know, in a timely manner, if at all. So I just implore you to take that into account as you consider this.
I think that, again, as a way to move this forward, we understand that that hydrology is important, and there's going to be some discussions that'll go back between our engineer and Bowler about what we need in order to be best informed about the conditions regarding hydrology. So that's going to be something that's ongoing, and again, we'll make, we'll make suggestions or recommendations, and you're going to, and you're going to get back to us, and that's an ongoing. I think that that's, if there's a number-one concern, that's probably it. So, and we understand that, and you understand that we understand that, so this is going to be ongoing. Is that fair to say? And again, it'll be triggered by some correspondence from, from, from Michelle in the near future.
We've had some correspondence, we've had communications, so those communications will continue. This isn't the end of the line. We understand that, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anything else? Okay, so just real quick. So I'm, I have to make sure I'm protecting the process, and I have to make sure that the process is- and I have to make sure that the process is, you know, intact. If anybody has any comments, I know lots of us here are interested in process. If anybody has any comments or suggestions for me, please send them to me. And I will read all of your comments and I'll take them into consideration. We have a long form that's been provided to us now. And again, this may be overkill, but again, on this... To be overly prudent, what I'm going to ask, because we have now, we're in receipt of the long form, I'm going to ask that the board declare itself lead agency and I'm going to send out the consents for the board to act as lead agency to all the involved agencies. They're going to be provided with the long form, DEC, DOT, Columbia County Board of Health, Columbia County Planning Board, whatever ones are missing. They're all going to receive the long form. And then when we get back, I'll ask the board to declare itself a lead agency a third time, probably next month or in July, just to cross, you know, to dot all my i's. There's some different lines of thought on this, so it's better to have overkill. So I'm going to ask the board to designate yourself lead agency and I will... That's all you need to do. And I will send out those notices to the involved agencies.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Steven?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Is there anything else that you need from us this evening? Anything else that we can do before we depart?
No.
Okay. We appreciate everybody's time tonight, both on the board and the public. So thank you and look forward to returning in the near future.